We'll call the commission meeting into session. I'd like to call on Commissioner Pettis Reed to come forth, introduce our minister of the day, Reverend Wayne Langford, and to be followed by the pledge of allegiance to the American flag and to the Tennessee flag. Commissioner Pettis, you're recognized.
As Wayne Langford come forward at this time. As Wayne's coming forward, I would like to mention one thing. Wayne Langford is the, is my preacher. Come on up here, Wayne. And he's the preacher for the East Main Church of Christ, which if you look right out this window, you can see right straight down the street, that's actually been there the same length of time that this building has. It was built in 1859, just like this courthouse has. He hasn't been preacher there that long. He only come the early part of the, of 1990s and has done an excellent job there. One interesting fact about the East Main Church of Christ, when that congregation first began back in 1830s, it was looking for a place to, to meet. And it was a new congregation, which was hard for them to find a place to meet within the other churches. But the sheriff of Rutherford County asked that congregation if they wanted to, they could meet within the courthouse. Now, that was the first courthouse of Rutherford County, not this one. That one burnt down when the state legislature met here. But I thought it was quite interesting that the preacher of our congregation gets the opportunity this night to offer our prayer. So I'm gonna ask Wayne to come forth this time to offer prayer at this time.
Eternal God and Father in heaven, we're so grateful that you're our Father. We're thankful for your grace and mercy toward us. We're thankful that you've given us our life even this day. We're thankful for our country and for many people there is great turmoil in our country at this time. And we pray for our leaders, that they will make the decisions that we might continue to lead a quiet and peaceable life here in this country. Tonight, Father, we're mindful of some who are bereaved. We pray especially for the Dodd family at this time. We know that you can comfort them through your word, and we pray for the support that they need from their family and friends. We're thankful, Father, that we have the privilege of prayer in our country, and so tonight, we lift up before your throne of grace our community. We're thankful for our mayor. We pray that you'll bless him as he continues his leadership. And we be thankful for this body of commissioners who meet here from time to time. And we pray tonight that the decisions that they make will be for the betterment of our community. We ask you to bless each family that's represented here tonight. Bless us all according to our needs. And again, we thank you and offer this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge to the state flag. Three white stars on a field of blue. God keep them strong and ever true. It is pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee. Thank you Reverend for coming tonight. You'll be on the board tonight, members. Is everybody voting? Madam Secretary, record the vote. Roll call.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have a, we have a quorum. Next on the agenda, well, first let me welcome everybody. We have a great crowd, probably standing room only tonight. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. I know we have several resolutions and some people to honor, so we're just glad that you're all here on a rainy, terrible night. But thank you for attending, and, and we look forward, hopefully you can glean something out of our commission meeting tonight. But we're, we're looking forward to honoring you that are in the crowd. Reading and approval of the minutes. Speaker Pro Tem Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. I reviewed those minutes. I find them to be in order. Move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a resolution of recognition. Oakland High School, 2018, 6A Blue Cross Bowl State Champions. Chairman Robert P. Commissioner P. I'd like to call Commissioner Harris forward too. He's gonna help me with this. He's got a association he'll explain to you with the Oakland football team. Once he gets there, if the players and coaches and affiliated people are, would, come on I think I'm feeling the room shift a little bit over here. Guys, welcome, welcome. It's awful proud day for all of us, especially for you people that have worked so hard for this. Just give a little quick history. I had a brother that played football at Oakland, younger brother, back in 1977. He was on the team that won the first bowl game that Oakland football won. I think it was the Crockett Bowl, and I believe it was Lawrenceburg, and they beat them about 7-0. And then it was lucky enough, his son was on the 1998 state championship team. And my daughter, who was a cheerleader at the time, was there. But anyway, football runs pretty deep in our family, but I'm awful proud of you guys. But I'd like for Commissioner Harris, who's also associated with these guys, and he'll, he'll explain that, to read the resolution, because you're gonna get tired of listening to me talk here in a little bit on our budget. Mr. Harris.
You're recognized.
Kevin Creasy is a very close friend of mine, and I was trying to think, how can I honor him and these young men? And the biggest way I want to do it is, I don't want you all to think that it was one game. This went in for a whole year, and some of them for everything that they've done in their entire career. I want to give you some dates, and, and I'll be real quick. November 24, 2017, in the state championship, in the semifinals of the state championship, Mariville beat Oakland, and, on a last second field goal. And it was a devastating loss. It was a tough loss for these young men. But on 11-25-17, these coaches and these young players started work for the next year. Lifting weights, getting theirself in shape. Coaches, what did I do right? What did I do wrong? Watching film. All that went in. You don't win championships on one night, it's for the whole year, sometimes a career. So let me get ahead of myself. Anyway, so these young men started doing their weights, started doing all that. Then comes April, spring practice. And then these coaches got questions, they're gonna answer them, they gotta see who's gonna be where, are these guys physical? And then we have practice after that. And then we get to July, and then we have two-a-days, three-day practices, 90-degree weather. And these kids are constantly, all together, trying to get to one goal. Now, I'm gonna give you another date, which I think is pivotal to this season, and this is my opinion only, but in August 24, 2018, Mariville came, we went to Mariville, right? You went to Mariville. Anyway, we played Mariville, and we got, and they got beat. Now, I think it was pivotal because these kids could've cashed it in, could've gave up, could've felt sorry for theirselves, coaches could've laid down. They didn't. They got hungry. They wanted even more. They won 11 games in a row, and then here we come to November 23, 2018, Mariville. State semifinals, same situation every year ago. After that game, Mariville had the worst loss in decades. This team beat them 38 to nothing. Unbelievable. The very next week, they played a powerhouse team out of Memphis, Tennessee, Whitehaven, and gave them one of the worst beatings they ever had. And they're state champs. We got a resolution that we're gonna give these young men, and I'm gonna apologize to all y'all now, I'm gonna try to say your name as good as I can, okay? Whereas recently, the Oakland Patriots High School Football Team won the 6A Blue Cross Bowl State Championship. And whereas, this is the school's fourth state football championship, and whereas Oakland finished 14-1 and captured the first football title since 2008. Whereas, the team members are: Brevin Linnell, Jalen Locklear, Mookie Wilson, Woody Washington, Justin Jefferson, Joseph Anderson, Amir Gray, Decoy Randolph, Quentin Biszinski, get close, I hope, Malik Seibert, Ian Schletzer, Victor Stevenson, Cameron Goodwich, Kobe Mayning, Dede Anderson, Eddie Wilson, Xavier Patterson, Josiah Gordon, De'Aaron McDonald, Antonio Patterson, Christian Cantrell, Ronnie Rankins, BJ Conard, Christian Wright, Tim Panel, Xavier Myers, Ann Sears, Jason Manifee, Charlie Carson, Brandon Carnard, Kalib Brewer, Kobe Sloan, Cameron Crutchfield, Anthony Boo, Cameron Washington, Chase Stokes, Aaron Moore, Giovanni Moody, Brandon Moorhead, Kadique Patteron, Cassius Thorp, I'm sorry, Josh Stroh, Dylan Janet, Kyron Rutledge, Mikael Holland, Freddie James, Joseph Crimson, Cole Rich, Edwin Madero, Johnny Stanford, Jalen West, Ben Todd, Kenneth Orso, Jacob Crabill, Joshua Curry, Josh Curry, Toby Chapman, Hunter Lehman, Cameron Miller, Jordan McMahon, Stephen Donahue, Graham Keating, Graham Keating, Charlie Jones, Lionel Patterson, Alexander Jones, Jackson Riley, Jalen Willard, Drew Milligan, Josh Miller, Austin Chaney, Jared Hobren, Ken Williams, Donovan Williams, Ethan Ellis, Alex Brown, Justin Springfield, Dixon Luaw, Joe DeFreen, Derek Clark, Isaiah Thomas, Tony Bigsby, Cal Miller, Kalib Alinger, James Griffin, Jalen Middlebrook, Trashawn Green, Alberto Zaret, Jay Sean Taylor, Garrett Taylor, Michael Turk, Garrett Dodd, and Kalen Spencer. And whereas, this has been an exciting and successful season, a special commendation is due to all team members. Coach Kevin Creasy, Principal John Marshall, for their dedication, commitment, which made this championship possible, and for beginning this fine publicity to our community by the good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now therefore be it resolved, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that we extend this resolution of recognition of 2018 Oakland High School Football Team, Coach Kevin Creasy, Principal John Marshall, for their successful year this 17th day, January 2019.
Appreciate it. Say anything? Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
We'll go ahead and make this a motion. Resolve this 17th day of January 2019. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Harris and others. Let you speak, Coach.
I hear that you have some budget talks, so I wanna keep this, I wanna keep this short. But I will say this, it's an honor to be in such a historic building. Glad to hear they hadn't burned down lately. I may have to after your talk about some budgets, you know? But I tell you, we are really honored, and we're very proud to represent Murfreesboro. And it's an honor to get recognized tonight. Mayor, we appreciate you having us, and of course, Mr. P., Mr. Harris, Commissioner Harris, Commissioner P., we're very honored to be here, and we will take this resolution and add it to our accolades, and hopefully, very soon, maybe you'll get to see us again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach. Mr. Marshall? Mr. Marshall, you wanna say anything as principal? You're good. Members of the team, Coach, Mr. Marshall's principal, we just wanna say thank you because of the recognition that you bring to us here in Rutherford County. I mean, it's statewide, everywhere, when we travel across the state, people going, what are y'all doing in Rutherford County? I mean, it's just, it, it's, it makes you smile. So we just say thank you, and keep up the good work, and, and Godspeed on next year. You're welcome. Members, we have a motion on the floor with a second. All in favor of the resolution? Signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. So we'll keep it moving. Item G on the agenda, we have the resolution of recognition for Greenhouse Ministries, the 20th anniversary. Commissioner Phillips, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. I'd like to ask, Cliff and Jane Sharp are here, if you would please come forward. I see them coming up, and while they're coming up, I'd like to go ahead and announce, you probably received an invitation to their celebration of 20 years, and I think it's scheduled for this coming, I'm sorry, on Monday, June, January the 28th, and that'll be at 5:30 at First Presbyterian Church. Hello. Commissioner Philip Dodd should be reading this resolution, but as you all are aware, he's, his mother's passed away, and visitation is tonight, and I think all of us, our heart goes out to them, and I'll do my best to fill in for Phil tonight. Resolution of recognition, Greenhouse Ministry 20th Anniversary. Whereas in 1999, Cliff and Jane Sharp had a vision of a place in our community where people could volunteer their time, and more importantly, a place to move people out of their current situation of helplessness and help them see their God-given potential. And whereas, because of their dream, Greenhouse Ministries was founded and is now celebrating its 20th anniversary. And whereas, Greenhouse Ministries has the goal to help, educate, and connect with every client who walks through their doors, and the nonprofit organization serves each person with love and respect. And whereas, the services they offered are: food pantry, learning center, legal clinic, nursing clinic, occupational therapy, recycle bicycle program, Veterans for Volunteers, Wellspring, college cottage housing program, and Hands Up for New Hope, among others. And whereas, services are open to anyone, regardless of race, color, sex, gender, national orientation, disability, age, veteran status, or national or ethnic origin. And whereas, Greenhouse Ministries runs on over 400 volunteer hours a week, and they could not function without their volunteers. And whereas, our community is so thankful for the vision of Cliff and Jane Sharp in 1999, as they have helped many citizens who were being overlooked, underserved, and had no one to help them. And whereas, the Sharps have demonstrated in countless ways their dedication to the welfare of others, and have earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and all ages who are proud to call them their friends. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, at its regular session on this 17th day of January 2019, does hereby extend this resolution of recognition to Cliff and Jane Sharp and Greenhouse Ministries on the occasion of their 20th anniversary, and for their dedicated service to Rutherford County, and wish them much success and happiness in all their future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of appreciation be forwarded to Cliff and Jane Sharp by the clerk of this legislative body, resolved this 17th day of January 2019. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
I have a motion and a second, bumped by Commissioner Johnson and others. Without objection, all members will be included on the resolution. Seeing no objection, all members will be included. Let me just say, Cliff and Jane, you, I know that God has guided your vision for 20 years, and you, you continue to bless this community and all the good work that, that you have done. Just like today, when we had the meeting on the, with the homeless task force, I guess we've got a new name for that, but we're all, all the organizations are coming together, and you, I know you will continue to lead us in that effort, trying to give a hand up to all the citizens that, that need our help. And that's what we're about in, in government as well, so we, we say thank you for that. I have a motion and a second, my highness. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much. Congratulations. You'd like to say anything?
We feel very blessed, and we feel like that, again, God gave us the vision, but this is what we get to do. And, and that's exciting. And Greenhouse, because it is run by volunteers, it is the community's ministry. It doesn't belong to Jane and I. This greenhouse belongs to community, and I just hope it'll be around for a long time and continue to, to get volunteers involved, and continue to bless people who are underserved. And thank you so much, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Stay where you are, Commissioner Phillips. We have the next resolution. Next resolution is for the Rutherford County Property Assessor, Mr. Rob Mitchell, receiving the Excellence in Operations Awards by the Tennessee Association of Assessing Officers. You're recognized, Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. Mr. Mitchell, and I believe his key deputy, Russell Key, are here. If you would please come forward. Evening. Resolution of recognition, Rutherford County Property Assessor, Rob Mitchell, 2018 Excellence in Operations Award. Whereas, Rutherford County Assessor of Property, Rob Mitchell, was awarded the 2018 Excellence in Operation Award from the Tennessee Association of Assessing Officers during their annual winter meeting. And whereas, the Tennessee Association of Assessing Officers each year recognize a single assessor's office that reaches the highest levels of service and competency for their community, and this year, recognize the Rutherford County Assessor's Office has excelled in innovation and commitment to customer service. And whereas, the Tennessee Association of Assessing Officers is a professional organization composed of the elected officials serving as assessors of property in Tennessee. And whereas, this is a prestigious award, and congratulations should go to Mr. Rob Mitchell and each and every member of his staff for making Rutherford County Assessor's Office run as efficiently as possible as Rutherford County moves into the future. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, at its regular meeting on this 17th day of January 2019, does hereby extend this resolution of recognition to Rob Mitchell and the entire staff of the Rutherford County Property Assessor's Office for their commitment and dedication to the operations of this office and for their service to Rutherford County. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of recognition be forwarded to Mr. Mitchell by the clerk of this legislative body, resolved this 17th day of January 2019. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a second. P. and Commissioner Harris, others. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much for this recognition, and I just wanna thank my staff, because without them, the work doesn't get done. And it's just a pleasure to serve the citizens of Rutherford County. There's, there's no greater honor that any of us can have than to serve our, our fellow citizens. And we'll continue to do the, the best job that we possibly can, and just like the rest of Rutherford County's elected officials, I believe that we are all, just like the football team, the best in the state. Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Mitchell, I used to say when I was on the county commission here, that your department was one of the most important departments, not taking away from any other ones, but you're the ones, many of the departments spend the money, but your department's one that brings it in, tells TIB how much to collect, so the other departments can spend it. So it's very important. We thank you for the recognition, and especially when a statewide organization recognizes one of our constitutional officers, like, they have recognized you here. It's very important, and we're very proud of you and, and your whole department, because I'm sure your department makes you who you are. So again, congratulations. Members, we're a few minutes away from the public hearing. We will go ahead and move into item J. Elections and confirmations. We'll go to item number one, elect the notaries. Mr. Stevens, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On your iPads, you'll find a list of applicants for notaries. I would make a motion that we approve those.
Got a motion and a second on the notaries? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next, we need to announce a vacancy on our conservation board, and we need to fill a vacancy on the industrial development board and health, education, and facilities board to fill the unexpired term of Nate Shaw. This term expires in August of 2019. The steering committee recommends Mr. Warren Russell, and Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for his approval.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, sign the thumbs, sing aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Russell. I will say that when Mr. Russell came before the steering committee, it was one of the strongest groups of super-qualified 11. We had over 11 business leaders in our community that wanted to serve in this capacity. Every one of them were strong, and Mr. Russell came out on top, and I know you will lead us well in, in your endeavors on that committee, Mr. Russell. Thank you. Okay, we'll go back. Yes, sir. Commissioner McAdoo, you're recognized.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask if it was all possible to suspend the ruling that's recognized Mr. Russell, since he's here tonight as being the new member of the IDB Board, and ask him if he wants to say a few words.
Without objection. Motion to suspend the rules. Got a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Suspend the rules. Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Russell, if you would come forward.
First, I'd like to give honor to God for this opportunity. I will serve the community well. I will do my- I will do my best to honor God in this endeavor, but I would like to thank the mayor, the steering committee and the commission for this opportunity and I do take it very seriously. I'd also like to thank Kirk Wade for bringing this opportunity to me, for letting me know about the announcement and the opportunity itself and my family. This is the reason that I serve. It's my family who is here supporting me tonight and I'd like to say thank you.
Okay, members, we'll move to suspend the rules to go for, we have public comment tonight. The first request that we have for a public comment is Meredith Kermitel on landfill issues. Ms. Kermitel.
Mayor Kethrin, it's six thirty.
Yes, sir.
I'm pretty sure that we're supposed to go to our public hearings at six thirty as advertised.
I want to ask you to sit back down. Excuse me. All right. It's, thank you, Commissioner. We will move into the public hearings, move to suspend the rules. First is rezoning request, Carolyn Waite. Mr. Demasi, you're recognized on item number one.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kethrin and good evening, commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. Before I get into this first rezoning request, I did want to make a quick announcement regarding the second request. That would be eighteen dash A zero twenty-one by Wayne Miller for property located along Blackman Road. The representative for the applicant contacted me just two days ago on Tuesday and asked for that item to be taken off of the agenda. So, that item, although it was scheduled for public hearing tonight, will not be on the agenda tonight, will not be considered. I anticipate that they're going to be making some changes and they'll probably have to go back through the planning commission before it comes back to you for consideration. So, if anybody's in the audience for that item tonight, I just wanted to make a quick announcement that that has been taken off the agenda. With that, I'll go back to the other item for rezoning tonight. This is for some property located along Highway ninety-nine. As you see on your agenda packets, you can find your agendas on the iPads. This property is located along Highway ninety-nine. The portion of Highway ninety-nine is currently being widened to a five lane road at this time. The applicant's requesting rezone the subject properties, there's two of them, to commercial services. There's no development plans that have been identified at this time and no concept plan has been included with your agenda packets because one was not submitted. The properties currently have access to Stonebrook Drive. A parcel eight also has access to Foxcroft Road, which goes all the way through, as well as New Salem Road or Highway ninety-nine. Staff would be hesitant to allow any access onto either Foxcroft or Stonebrook without seeing exactly what kind of development it is we're talking about. Should this application be approved tonight, of course, they would have to submit a site plan for planning commission review at that time. Landscaping, performance standards, all those other things would also be considered during the site plan review. When you look at the staff report that's included in your packets, you'll see that staff had a neutral recommendation on this. We had mixed emotions really about this application. Commercial services is consistent with the recommendations made by the county's comprehensive plan. Highway ninety-nine is going to be a five lane within the next couple of years when the project is finished. And there's also commercial zoning located directly across the street within the city limits of Murfreesboro. That being said, a portion of the property is being used for a staging area for that widening project, which is expected to be completed in 2020. We did have some concerns regarding the viability of the septic site on that particular property. The representative of the applicant has stated that they are taking measures to make sure that that sole site is protected, so if there's ever any septic needs for that property, that they would be able to access that site. Staff also felt that the application would be more appropriate if all the properties along this segment of Highway ninety-nine or New Salem Highway were to be zoned commercials opposed to piecemeal, what we're seeing right now. We have these two right that we're considering tonight and I just received an application to the planning commission for next month's meeting for the two properties adjacent to that. So, again, that was one of the concerns that I had. There was some discussion regarding this item at the planning commission's meeting. Some of the same issues that I'm discussing here tonight were also brought up during that meeting regarding the, excuse me, flip the page here. Some of the comments on the planning commission about the timing of their request, but the planning commission ultimately felt that the area was in transition, which staff does agree with, considering the existing city zoning in proximity of this site right across the street, as well as the fact that there didn't appear to be any opposition to this request. So, the recommendation was made for approval and it did pass by a unanimous vote. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Demasi. Without objection, we'll close the public notice. We'll now be open for public hearing. If you have comments, I'll need you to come up front, in front of the microphone, identify yourself for the record. You're recognized.
My name is Scott Starver. I live in that area. There are several homes there and there was a home on that corner that was taken down. This is a residential area now and my concerns would be all of the houses on the backside that are on Foxcroft and Foxcroft right now does not go all the way through to Casey and Lane. I believe they've taken one of the roads further back and brought it on through, but there are, one, two, there are five houses total through that area, residential areas. And there's, the two that are beside me, they already have a big sign saying they're selling that property as commercial property and my understanding is it's not yet zoned commercial, but what will that do to the, to my property value? Because I own property not only on the front half of ninety-nine, but also on the back half that runs along Foxcroft. So, I've talked to Doug Demasi, I think, on the phone and told him that I was opposed to this, but, and there are some other neighbors here, my wife and the man that lives beside me, but we were just concerned about what that's going to do to our property if this gets zoned as commercial land. So, that was, that was just my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there others? Identify yourself for the record. You're recognized. Identify yourself for the record. You're recognized.
Tom Smith, I live at twenty-three seventy-eight Highway ninety-nine, next to the gentleman that just spoke. And I'm kind of lost in this process because I heard all of these people talking about city annexation, commercial, that property going commercial, being in the city, but if this property is zoned commercial and next month, these people ask for annexation into the city, then what's the process then? That's my only question.
Are there others who wish to speak? Good evening. Identify yourself for the record.
Mayor Kethrin, commissioners, my name's Clyde Roundtree of the Hoveston Steel Engineering. I represent Carolyn Waite, who is the applicant on this particular project. And just some clarification. First off, Mrs. Waite, I worked with her, she lives across the street from this particular process, the property, and the home that was torn down was one of her homes. And in the process of rezoning this property, we were asked to have a, we had a neighborhood meeting and Mrs. Waite, I guess we had probably maybe ten people come that were all located along New Salem. And as was mentioned, there are homes that are being sold as potential commercial. Some people are actually saying they're commercial. They're not right now, but the land obviously is potential commercial. Mrs. Waite was trying to honor Mr. Demasi's request to have as many as possible go with her through this rezoning process. No one really joined that opportunity at the time, although we had a lot of landholders along the road and they're all kind of waiting and seeing. And Mrs. Waite basically asked me, she goes, you know, I could wait all day for someone else to make a decision. She goes, I'm getting up in age and I just need to kind of simplify a few things. So, her goal is just to get this rezoned, just to basically have one more thing off of her to-do list, is her land holdings. And so, that was her request. She did honor the process. She didn't list it commercial, it's not for sale at this time. She just wanted to prepare it properly so that when the time comes for her to sell it, it's properly zoned and the way she sees it, she feels like it should be. The other thing is mentioned, she did let it be a staging area for the construction going along New Salem Road. They asked her about that and she said that's perfectly fine for them to use it for that purpose, but she was very specific about where they put their trailer, making sure that the septic field wasn't compromised in the process. Her husband, William, was a major developer in Murfreesboro, so she learned a lot from him and so she was ahead of the game on that one. And as far as the concern with Foxcroft Drive, we anticipate no access point going on the Foxcroft Drive. Stonebrook Drive, they're probably something closer to the front, more towards New Salem. So, with that in mind, she has no intention about how this property's going to be used. She just felt like commercial services was a zoning that would be appropriate for, consistent with what's going on across the street, but also kind of consistent with what's been going, developing along the roadway. So, with that in mind, I have any questions, if you have any questions for me, I'd love to answer them. Just wanted to make sure we addressed the Foxcroft Drive, that that wouldn't be a concern for an access point. And as far as honoring Doug's request to have more neighbors involved, and I think the fact that the next two over, that was a result of probably us being at planning commission last month, they probably saw that it was favorable and that's probably why they're coming in now. So, with that in mind, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Commissioner Coosh.
Mr. Roundtree, do you have any information you could share on the gentleman's question about this possible city sewer and/or annexation possibility?
Mrs. Waite has no intention at this point of annexing the property. She's, it's in the county. She feels like that's appropriate for it to stay in the county. Again, she's not, it's more for her, it's more of a timing thing based on where she's at in her situation in life. She doesn't want to wait around just for all these variables to get kind of calculated. She knows it's going to go commercial eventually. She said, I just want to get it done now versus waiting for an annexation process, waiting for the road to wait and waiting for all the variables, Mike, that, you know, possibly could come along. So, the urgency is just the fact that it's just time. She wants to kind of clean up a few of her business dealings and get them done. Thank you.
Are there others to speak on the rezoning? Without objection, we'll move to close the public hearing. Chair Lunt, entertain a motion to accept the rezoning request.
I asked that same question to Doug to see if he had seen the information.
Absolutely. Mr. Demasi.
Just to make sure I understand the question, you're wanting to know the answer to the gentleman's question about what happens if they ask for annexation into the city?
If there's any potential about sewer.
Yeah, the sewer, sanitary sewer is located across Highway ninety-nine. I was looking at the map. Yes, sir. They would have to bore under the road. It's about two hundred and fifty feet at its closest point. Of course, you'd have to have somebody engineer the design and all that to go along with that. Now, when I used to work at the city of Murfreesboro, it's been over twelve years now, but whenever we looked at annexation of property, if there was a piece of property that had a commercial designation already assigned to it, it came in with a kind of a default commercial zone in the city limits. Now, of course, there's always the ability to change that, assuming that hasn't changed any, that would be the process. But again, it's been several years since I've worked there, but that's how it was when I worked there.
Other questions? Commissioner? Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is in my district. I live very close to this property and the next major intersection just down from this property is Casey and Lane, to give you an idea of where this property is. So, Highway ninety-nine and Casey, huge commercial section of property. And yes, that strip of housing from Casey and Lane down to this property, some, most of those homes already have for sale signs up in their yard, trying to cash in on the potential growth that's going to happen there. Doug is right, across the street is all commercial. On all four corners of Casey, that's all commercial. So, as New Salem widens, it's under construction right now, a little farther down, actually where this housing is, it's under construction. No doubt, this is going to be commercial. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve this and would hope for a second.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Phillips, on the second. Without objection, we'll call, all voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Demasi. And you have withdrawn number two, item number two. Okay, without objection, we'll go back into public comments. We'll call on Ms. Meredith Kermitel. She wants to address the commission tonight, speak about landfill issues.
I'm Meredith Kermitel. I live at five eighteen Twin Oak Drive. I have watched with frustration as this commission struggles to do what to do with our garbage. From outside, it seems there has been little vision of what you want to see in Rutherford County in middle Tennessee. I think part of the problem is that you have been excluded, you have excluded the public from this process and in fact, this process has been far from transparent. So, what does a sustainable solid waste program look like? It looks like what they have seen in San Francisco or Boulder, Colorado or Portland, Oregon. Fifty-plus cities in this country, whole states and even countries have adopted zero waste goals. Setting a zero waste goal does not mean you meet it tomorrow, but it does clarify what you are working towards. In San Francisco, they have diverted eighty percent of waste from the landfill through a combination of recycling, composting, bans on certain products and incentives for people and businesses to reduce waste. The education part of this will be tough. It was tough there. It'll be tough here. Some things will just have to be mandatory. San Francisco's cost for the system is entirely funded by waste collection fees that average under twenty-five dollars per family per month. Boulder, Colorado has reached fifty-one percent diverted from the landfill. Portland, Oregon reached seventy percent by 2016. And you might say, those are large, rich liberal cities and that's not us. They had the will to make it happen. They were aggressive with policy changes and efforts to make change. Things they did are not unique to large, rich liberal cities. We could do them too. Some other places have fallen short of the goal, but still have decreased the amount going into their landfill greatly and are not giving up. Both Republic and GBB stated that nobody has made zero waste work. That's just not so. I heard the sales pitch given by Republic Services last week at the Public Works Committee. There stated thirty-five to forty-five percent of waste diverted from the landfill in a world-class facility seems a little pathetic next to percentages achieved in San Francisco and elsewhere. It's generally estimated that forty to sixty percent of waste is compostable. Despite this, it seems Republic places little emphasis on composting. Republic also stated that their efforts to address the odor problem were voluntary. As a SOCOM member, I can tell you that that is also just not always true. We have spent years applying pressure to make that happen and addressing violations of state regulations. In my opinion, Republic Services is not a good neighbor, nor are they trustworthy. I would like to see you set a goal of zero waste for this county and work towards that. Don't settle for the easy convenience solution. The taxpayers of this county did not. The taxpayers of this county did not elect you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kermitel. If you could stay till the end of the meeting under other business, I'll kind of follow up behind and let you know kind of what is in the plan from this commission. And we'll go from there. So thank you so much for your public comments. Members, next we have Mr. Mike Vaught, representing Farm Bureau, wants to talk about tonight, address the commission on Lane Agri Park. Mr. Vaught.
I'm Mike Vaught, 6594 Browns Mill Road, Las Casas. If the commission, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak. If you'll indulge me for just a minute, and I know it's been mentioned previously, but I would like to extend a public sympathy to the Dodd family. Ms. Nancy was, as you know, Dr. David Dodd's wife. There's a garden between TOA and the newer hospital now out there that is named for both of them. And if you were in Rutherford County, in the hospital in the 60s, 70s, and on into the 80s, you couldn't walk the halls without Dr. Dodd being paged. This was long before cell phones and pagers. And the reason he was able to do that is because she was at home and had his back. And the reason I know this is because I frequented the Dodd household many, many days as a younger guy, and probably a lot of nights that were really, really too late. And knew both of them, and I consider Leslie, Chip, John, and Commissioner Phil Dodd to be very good friends of mine. I did want to talk about tonight, I'm aware that I think it's out of committee proposal to take part of the Lane property, the ag center out there, and use it for a satellite office and possibly a highway patrol office. And I do applaud y'all's being frugal and trying to get the state to pay for part of that building, but I'll have to represent Farm Bureau here. And although we have not voted for it on the board, I can assure you that it would be a unanimous vote to oppose this. Mr. Lane, and I knew Mr. Lane, not well, but I knew Mr. Lane, as most of you, maybe not all of you are aware of this, sold the county, sold the property to the county at a discount, with stipulation, as my understanding, to be used for 50 years for ag purposes. And I think the farm, I know the farming industry in this county is less than it used to be, but it still generates about $40 million a year. And it's, according to UT figures, is number 11 in the state in the return to the county that it does. And I can assure you, a lot of us are paying our fair share of the property taxes to build new schools too. Had a conversation with Mr. Lane after he'd sold the property to the county. It was at a discount. It's my recollection that Mr. Lane held a mortgage on the property where the county could pay for it over two or three years without taking out bonds for it. My good friend John Hooper and I had a conversation with Mr. Lane outside of Hooper Supply, and we were really bragging on him and thanking him for having that outlook for agriculture.
Oh, can I have some more time?
Just one more minute.
And Mr. Lane said that we were bragging on him, and then we said something to him about holding the notes on it. And he said, boys, don't worry about me. He said, I've got the whole county tied up, everything they own. And he grinned and went on down the street to the next business deal. Mr. Lane loved Rutherford County. He loved his 4L Hereford Farm. And most of all, he loved agriculture. And I think that's the reason he did this. I urge you to honor Mr. Lane's wishes. It is my understanding that one of his sons is not in favor of this, so I urge you not to consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaught. Thank you so much. Next, we'll move into reports and standing committees. Budget Finance Investment Committee. I'm sorry. Chair Lentertain a motion as Mr. P is coming forward to accept the consent agenda. Commissioner P, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. I've reviewed that consent agenda. I find all of those items appropriate to be on that agenda, and I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
You have a motion, members. I would like to strike at this point the item number three, the home grant inspection contract. We had talked to Reba about this, and we feel like that we're going to put out another RFP, so if you would strike that. One of the companies that wanted to do the home inspections was requested by THDA to, they were removed for whatever practices that didn't meet their guidelines, and we have one. And talking with our county attorney, that we're going to put it out to bid one more time. They didn't want to take the recommendation of our county attorney, which actually said that they would have to carry their own insurance. They want to ride and do the inspections on our insurance, and they didn't want to have to furnish those type of liability limits to us. And I didn't want them, who knows what they could do? They could catch somebody's house on fire, they could, you know, it's just unlimited of what some person could do without them carrying and furnishing their own liability insurance. So we're going to put that out on a RFP.
I amend my motion to strike item number three.
Okay. Got a motion to amend the motion? All in favor of amending the motion to strike number three? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries back on the original motion to accept the consent agenda. And a second? All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. This will be on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Motion passes.
Commissioner Phillips. While Commissioner P is coming up, I'd like to remind everyone that your annual conflict of interest statement is due by the end of this month. And if you haven't completed that, do so in the next couple of weeks, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Next, we have the Budget Finance Investment Committee. Mr. P.
All right. Hopefully, I can get through this quickly for us. The first has to do with bringing some money into HR because of the number of employees that we've been losing and having to rehire new hires. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. For human resources evaluation and testing, employee test, $20,000. From unassigned fund balance, $20,000. And this is also for physicals due for employees and turnovers. Resolve this 17th day of January 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Got a motion and a second? On the board? Got a second? Commissioner Cook, Commissioner Phillips, and others? Okay, place your vote. Call the Rome, I'm Secretary. I mean.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Okay, the next resolution on our agenda is for solid waste fund to be amended as follows. For convenience centers, this is for the Leanna Convenience Center and costs related to that, engineering costs. Increase expenditures for engineering services, $35,000. And decrease assigned fund balance, $35,000. This is coming out of his budget. Resolve this 17th day of January 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second? Commissioner McAdoo, Commissioner Piercy, you're on the board. Cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Now's the vote.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Our next resolution has to do with our Archives Building. Resolution, whereas it is, there is a need to plan, design, and construction addition to the County Archive Building to house the historic records of the county. And whereas a two-story building addition of 11,000 square feet is proposed, and whereas the estimated cost of funding, the architectural and engineering fees, is $124,000. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding for the architectural and engineering fees for an addition to the County Archives Building in an estimate of $124,000 be authorized for a future bond issue. Resolve this 17th day of January 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Irvin. You're on, Mr. Kusch.
Do you know if this, this number, $124,000, did that come from the PBA?
No, sir. I believe we modified that in budget to go ahead and just, to get this moving along. This will be something that we'll have to address, you know, as it comes about, but this will allow us to go ahead with the bids.
So who came up with $124,000 for the addition?
I don't recall the name of the source.
Klein Sweeney.
Sorry.
Klein Sweeney.
Okay, all right. It just seems a little excessive for the addition. That's why I ask. Okay.
You're on the board. Cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Okay, this next resolution is actually in agreement with our Public Building Authority to construct this archive building that we just voted on. Whereas Rutherford County desires to enter into an agreement with the Public Building Authority of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for architectural and engineering services to develop the construction plan and provide construction services for an addition to the Archives Building. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with the Public Building Authority of Rutherford County, Tennessee. A copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 17th day of January 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Toronto and Commissioner McAdoo? You're on the board. Cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Okay, our next resolution has to do with Nissan North America actually selling their battery plant and the bonds that will be issued to work with these folks on that. Whereas in November 2009, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners approved the issuance of industrial revenue bonds to finance cost of the battery manufacturing plant for Nissan North America Incorporated, NNA. And whereas the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, in its meeting December 19, 2018, approved a resolution to partially redeem the outstanding bonds with respect to certain equipment located in the battery manufacturing plant. To approve the NNA request to convey the equipment to NNA with the purpose of the conveyance of the equipment to permit NNA to sell the equipment to Envision AESC USLLC, who will operate the battery manufacturing plant independent of NNA. And whereas the resolution also authorizes the issuance of industrial revenue bonds to finance the cost of acquisition by Envision of the equipment conveyed to Envision. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents and matters for the partial redemption of NNA of outstanding bonds for equipment located in the battery manufacturing plant and the issuance of industrial revenue bonds by the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the purpose of financing the cost of equipment located in the battery manufacturing plant acquired by Envision. In accordance with the resolution of the Industrial Development Board, a copy of this same attachment hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein as set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 17th day of January 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Johnson? You're on the board.
There, Catherine.
Question? Commissioner Phillips.
Probably not absorbing everything that's going on here. Somebody walk me through what we're doing. It looks like we did industrial bonds at one time, and now that property is being sold, and we're wanting to do it again. Is that, I'm just wanting to make sure we're not double-dipping or doing that kind of thing. Could someone walk me through what's happened and what we're doing and why we're doing it?
Mr. Chairman.
It's all right, I'm going to ask to suspend the rules and have Mr. Sumner Bolden come forward, please. And I believe he can best answer your questions. You know, I can, please come on up.
Without objection, suspend the rules. Got a motion to suspend the rules by Commissioner McAdoo, is there a second? Suspend the rules and a second by Commissioner Phillips. Who's our suspended? Mr. Bolden, if you would, please come up, state your name for the record, and you're recognized.
Sumner Bolden. I represent the Industrial Development Board. What essentially is being done is a bifurcation of a tax abatement that was approved by the commission back in 2009. There's not an additional tax abatement being given. What's being done is the, before now, the entirety of the EV project, which is the battery plant, was operated by Nissan. As proposed, the equipment would be sold to a new entity who would then operate the plant, but the real estate would remain with Nissan because that's part of the Nissan campus. So there's not, there's not an additional abatement at all. We've just divided it in half, essentially. Now, there are some potential benefits to what's being proposed in the sense that in the before, Nissan had. the before, Nissan had, had made batteries for Nissan. Whereas in the after, this new entity is, is making batteries for all comers. They could conceivably sell to Nissan and to anyone else in the automotive business. But from, from the perspective of the county itself, there's not a request to grant an additional abatement to this new entity. We just divided it in half, if that makes sense. Yes, sir.
Before we leave, Mr. Bolden, Commissioner Gurney.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was looking through this and like in Exhibit A, could you explain a little bit? It looks like when Nissan, we were looking, you know, from what I understand, we approved bond issues and so on based on potential employment and economic benefit to the county. It looks like, if I can read this, a thousand full-time jobs comprised of both, full, thousand jobs comprised of both full-time Nissan employees and full-time on-site contract personnel. It looks like with this, we're going down to 300 full-time jobs, both full-time of ASIC and a full-time contract. The annual payroll is going from $40,770,000 down to $12 million, and et cetera. Can you explain a little bit about the implications to the county?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I can. If you, the best way to look at it is, as you've done and looked at this Exhibit A, which is sort of a spreadsheet, I think that you have, if you'll add together the jobs and the wage totals for both AESC and Nissan, you'll see that they total what was approved by the, by the commission back in 2009. So there's not any reduction either in the number of employees or in the total wages. It's just in the after situation, it's allocated between Nissan and between the new entity.
So 300 of them, you're working for the G Company, 1,000 of them, you're working for Nissan?
Yes, sir, with the...
No reduction?
Not at all. And in fact, the, the, the second step of the transaction is to impose those requirements on the new entity as well. So they're, they're similarly obligated to maintain those employment numbers and wage numbers. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Bolden? Seeing none, we'll come back into session. Mr. P., you're recognized.
Okay, we have a motion and a second now.
Motion and a second. You're on the board. Cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Motion passes. Other business, Mr. P.
The last thing we'll be looking at under budget is a fiscal strength and efficiency of government fiscal confirmation letter for the three-star program requirements. Basically what this is, we looked at this in budget, but we're required to be, to maintain being a three-star program recipient to show that we're capable of paying our debts. And if you'll, I'm not sure how that looks on your iPad, but there is a statement of cash flow analysis, and this shows that we have the money to pay our debts. And that has to be in our minutes. You know, the reading is there. If you've got any questions, I'm gonna refer them to our finance director. And I don't, I don't think we need a motion on this, just need to bring it to your attention. So that's all that we've got this afternoon, or this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. P., for that report. Health and Education Committee, Commissioner Allen, no report. Property Management Committee, Commissioner McAdoo, no report. Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Reed, no report. Public Works and Planning Committee, Commissioner Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you will turn to your iPad under the Public Works tab, you will see a 16-page resolution. But I am only gonna read about two-thirds of the first page, so you're very welcome. Let me give you a little synopsis. This is the adoption of the new updated Southern Building Code. And for those of you that have any building knowledge, code knowledge, the Southern Building Code is the bible that all codes, directors, builders, any trade such as mechanical, electrical, et cetera, have to meet. If you are not building per the Southern Building Code, you are out of line, okay? That's, the Southern Building Code is the bible of construction. So the Codes Department is getting ahead with the new version of the Southern Building Code by adopting the new standards. And by the way, these new standards have been vetted by the home builders. All the draft has gone out to everybody for a review and approval. So the resolution to adopt a family of building codes, and I'll explain the family, there's several sections. Whereas it is the desire of Rutherford County, Tennessee, to adopt an updated family of building codes, building-related codes herein, the codes, and whereas the provision of TCA 5-20-101 authorized such action by Rutherford County, Tennessee, and whereas the adoption of these codes is done to facilitate proper inspection activities by Rutherford County, Tennessee, related to construction and maintenance of buildings within the unincorporated boundaries of said county and within those incorporated municipalities where the municipality has not otherwise adopted a minimum building codes respecting the same subject matter as provided in TCA 5-20-106, and relating to public safety, health, and general welfare. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows. Section 1, and I'm gonna combine all these sections, so I just need to read this first couple lines. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commission that the 2018 International Building Code, as adopted by the International Building Code, is gonna cover these sections. Section 1 is the International Building Code. Section 2 is the Residential Building Code. Section 3 is the Fire Code. Section 4 is the Mechanical Code. 5 is the Plumbing Code. The next one is Fuel and Gas. The next is the, can't really read my writing. Oh, the Existing Building Code. And then the next one is the Swimming Pool and Spa. The next section is Energy Conservation, and the last is the Property Maintenance Code. So I'm lumping all those sections into one. So be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect in being enforced from and after its passage, the public welfare requiring it approved and adopted by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners on this day, 2019. Rutherford County, Mr. Mayor, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you.
Other comments? Seeing none. All in favor, seeing five, or seeing aye. All opposed, motion carries, resolution carries. Thank you. Steering Legislative Report, Commissioner Turner, no report. We will now move into other business. Solicited number A, Legislative Solid Waste Trip. Want to take a moment to inform the full commission as to what this is. Contrary to some belief that this commission is not moving forward on solid waste, we are. As many of you made the first trip to Sevier County to look at the solid waste facility, the composting facility we did back in September. We were sent an invitation by Republic to come to their facility in San Jose, California. They had requested leadership. Of course, we can't send the whole county commission and all the city councils, but they wanted the leadership of the, of the entire county, including all of the public entities. Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne, and Eagleville. So a trip has been coordinated. There will be six representing Rutherford County that will be attending. This will be on February the 20th, 21st, and 22nd. Will be going to San Jose, California, to look at their composting facility that is similar but different because they recycle on the front end compared to Sevier County. They do not. The next day, it will be outside of Las Vegas in the desert. They have, Republic has the largest and newest recycling facility in the country. Will be visiting that facility as well. And adjacent to that facility, it's my understanding, we're gonna request a visit to this large pig farm. In Las Vegas, all of the casinos, hotels, motels, and grocery stores, et cetera, all of the food waste, which makes up 42% of the solid waste stream going into most landfills around the country. They send all that wasted food that people don't eat. It's all scraps. Hogs won't eat anything, for those of you grown up around hogs. They, they eat that 42% of the waste stream, and then they process the hogs and probably sell it back in bacon and sausage and ham to the hotels. So circle of life, isn't it? So that's, that's a trip we'll be making. We'll come back. We'll have Mayor of Eagleville, Mayor City Manager of Laverne, Mayor City Manager of Smyrna, and the, Mayor cannot make it from City of Murfreesboro, but the, I believe it's the City Manager and Assistant City Manager will be representing City Council from City of Murfreesboro, and the six coming from here. The six representing this body will be Chairman P., Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Harris, Mac Nolan is our Solid Waste Director, myself, and Deputy of the Mayor Sandlin. We plan on making that trip and coming back and negotiating with Republic. If they don't want to negotiate, then we'll be making a recommendation back to the full body collectively as a county to move forward in addressing the waste stream at Middle Point. I think all of us are tired of kicking the can down the road. We've been doing it for 30 some odd years, and it's time to take a stand and make some decision of how we're gonna handle it. They say six years, eight years. Every time you talk to them, it's a moving target. If they want to speed it up, they could, because there's nothing holding them back from allowing more trash to come in from other cities and other states. So we need to be proactive in making these steps. So I think that we'll be able to come back and give a comprehensive report on the direction that this body and other elected bodies within our county can move in a positive direction to eliminate our waste. That's the report, and I look forward to giving your report after that. Two other things on other business I would like, yes, sir. Commissioner Piercy.
Back in the spring of last year, this commission put out a pretty strong voice about having any other dealings with Republic other than what their existing was. It feels like maybe you have a different vision than we had. I would like to know your vision of our trash in the future.
Well, from everything, Commissioner Piercy, that I've studied, and I've been studying this since I got elected in 1990 to this body, eight years on the commission, 16 years in the senate, I've looked at recycling, as a founding member of Recycle Rutherford back in 1992. It's gonna take a combination of everything, but I've looked at gasification, plasma gasification. We've listened to Chairman Kush with Public Works. We've had several presentations for people trying to come in and peddle. You can't do it all in one, but the composting, for those, in my opinion, is the cheapest way to, by turning it into dirt. Is there a better way? The markets have dried up in China on the recycling. But we have to change the paradigm in this county, if not the state, but we've got to start with this county. That's all we're concerned about, is what it's costing us. How do we change the paradigm of getting people to recycle and continuing to pile on at Middle Point? We do know that it's gonna, when I've talked to T-DAC, they said it would cost Republic, they're gonna have to, when they get ready to close, whenever that may be, 2.3 million cubic yards of dirt to close that. That's a whole lot of dirt, and we don't have that kind of dirt in this county. If we can't negotiate with them about building that same type facility here, then we need to be moving forward by ourselves. That's the only choice we have, in my opinion. That's my vision.
Made the comment that you were, we were worried about our trash in this county?
Yes, sir.
Think they will build a facility like that for this county and not take other county's trash in to sustain it?
Mr. Piercy, I don't know until we sit down around the negotiating table.
I would like to be included in on that, if that would be possible. I'd like to listen.
Oh, absolutely. That's why when Chairman Kush couldn't make it because of prior obligation with his business, I came to you as Assistant Chairman, Vice Chairman on the Committee of Public Works to attend with us and understand of your business obligations as well. So we went to, next in on Public Works Committee to, to try to visualize what type of processing that they do. If we have to do it ourself, then I want to know as much as we possibly can learn. So I thought if you can touch it, if you can see it, if you can smell it, it's well worth it to see the end product of where our trash is gonna go. But yes, sir, we'll definitely make sure that you're included in that.
The negotiation part is what I was interested in sitting in on.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments? Commissioner Allen.
I mentioned this to you, I think it was the day after we talked about this meeting. I just want to make sure that every, this is on everybody else's mind as well, and that is, Mac had made the comment in the Public Works meeting that the recycle market had softened, and that it was difficult to sell that product. And then he also talked about there being contamination, and several of our loads that had been planned to be recycled then had to end up in the landfill anyway. And so I want to make sure as you're having this conversation with them, that we really are talking about what's really gonna end up in the landfill. And, you know, if the, if the recycle market is soft, then what are we gonna do with it? You're spending all this time and money and energy separating it out, to then do what with it? And then we also need to figure out on the contamination piece, how do we prevent that? So that, once we do have something set aside recyclable, we can do that. So I just want to make sure that we really cover that part of it, because it's the whole begin with the end in mind. You're gonna recycle it, end up with it separated, and then do what with it?
Well, there are about 562 recycling facilities that take different parts here in the United States, and then we'd have to get into what's the, the transportation cost of transporting that material. Of course, China's the big, was the big one that locked the door and said, "We don't want any more trash. We don't want to be the world's trash center." And so that's when the bottom fell out of recyclables, when China stopped accepting it. There's a problem with waste away up in McMinnville. They're, they're taking trash like crazy up there, but they have no place to sell their fluff or the pellets that can be used for, for energy. So it's gonna take a pendulum change of how every household, every person is gonna have to pay at some point in time. As you see, the city of Murfreesboro just implemented a 5% fee onto their water bill. So it's, once we get back, at least we'll have some plan that we collectively can decide what direction we as a county want to go. And I think we'll lead the county, if not the whole country, in this direction. We can do it. I feel that confident in, in us addressing this issue. We have good, good-thinking people, and we have a university out here that can help, and, you know, it's just... you know, it's just, now's our time to shine, but let's make sure that we're well informed of that. Got two more things, very quickly, if I could. I'm going to call on Commissioner Brad Turner in just a minute, but before we do that, I would like to take just a moment of silence for one of our own, Commissioner Dodd. Some of us were unable to get to, over to visitation, the funeral's tomorrow for the loss of his mother. So if we could, just take a moment, moment of prayer. Lord, we ask you be with Commissioner Dodd and his family, and give him blessings, give him strength and vision, knowing that his mother is now in your hands. Christ's name, we pray. Amen. Last thing on agenda on other business, I'd like to call on Commissioner Brad Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Ketchum, for that, and good evening, Commissioners. I think by now, most of the commission body knows just a very humbling and honored opportunity to have to serve our next governor as the Commissioner for the Department of Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities. And as many of you know, my family falls into the special needs community, and it was an opportunity that I could not pass up. I'm very excited about it, but at the same time, I am going to miss this body, and I'm going to miss the people that we get the opportunity to serve, and I'm going to miss the Commissioners that I served with and those that I've served with in the past. So if you would just indulge me, I'm going to like to read my resignation letter publicly here for the record. I sent a copy of this to Mayor Ketchum this afternoon, so he does have that. Mayor Ketchum and Commissioners, it is with bittersweet emotion but extreme amount of appreciation and gratefulness to this body that I am submitting my resignation from the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners effective tomorrow, January 18, 2019. I thank the Lord above for his divine providence and guidance in my life. I want to thank the voters who entrusted me with their vote at the ballot box, and I'm humbled that I was afforded the privilege to serve these fine people. I've crossed many paths with so many unique individuals and elected officials during my time of service since August 2010. My fear is to try to name all of them and leave someone off the list. To that point, I offer my sincerest thank you to everyone that I have crossed paths with in this role and for everything that you have done for me. Your investment in me as a person and as an elected official has had a profound impact on my life. May God bless you in your role, and may God continue to bless Rutherford County and its people. Sincerely, Commissioner Brad Turner. And again, I just want to echo that. I'm very grateful for the opportunity that the voters in Smyrna and Laverne gave me to be able to represent them for almost nine years. It's hard to believe how quickly that's flown by. It's gone by truly in the blink of an eye. I want to thank my wife, Rebecca, for being my biggest cheerleader, and I know they're watching. Rebecca, I love you and Kinsley very much, and thank you for supporting me. She did a lot of door knocking. It's a partnership and not an individual deal, and so I'm thankful to have a family that supports me. And then in the way that our Republic is designed, very few things are as powerful to an individual as the ballot box. And the fact that somebody takes the time every four years to punch a ballot that says your name on it means a lot to me, and that's something that I never tried to take for granted. And as I'm leaving this body tonight, I want everybody here, and hopefully my life was able to reflect to you that the Lord's number one in my life, and I try to do my best to represent Him and represent the people that I serve. And I try to do the best to represent my family, and I try to do the best to represent you as the county commission. So with that, I don't say goodbye, I just say so long, because I'm sure I'll be seeing you again, and thank you again, Mayor Ketchum and Mayor Burgess and those that I served with before. Thank you for the privilege and opportunity to be able to sit in a body like this, and I will miss serving with you, but thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Turner, I can't tell you how elated we are. However, Rutherford County's loss is going to be the state's gain, and you have left your mark absolutely on this government body. You'll be missed. Your knowledge and calm demeanor will be missed, but I know you'll take it to the next level, because there are a lot of people in the intellectual community. I carried a lot of legislation for that community and ARC and other organizations when I was in the senate. They need a person with your conviction and your passion. And so your door knocking hasn't stopped. It will continue in a different position, but the doors will open automatically for you now that you wear that Commissioner's badge, and you're accepted into, it's quite a privilege to be accepted. And now we have a Commissioner from, a member of the cabinet, Governor's Cabinet, from Rutherford County, so you will make two. We have our new Adjutant General from Las Casas, I believe. So that's two in the cabinet representing Rutherford County. We're so proud of you and the work that you will continue to do, and God's blessed you. I know that He's opened the door for you to share with others, especially in the area for those who need our helping hand. Thank you so much. So members, what this means is, I talked to Josh, and trying to get up to speed on where this is. The county clerk should provide notice to every member of the county legislative body of the need to fill his vacancy under Tennessee Code annotated 5-5-11A1. And I believe that you could probably, Madam Clerk, you could make that announcement tonight to fill the vacancy. The county legislative body is required to make an appointment to fill the vacancy under Tennessee Code 5-5-104B1 within, keyword 120 days of receiving notice of the vacancy, unless during the time period there is a general election. So this means that we will be appointing, it's up to us, but it has to be done no later than 120 days, so it could actually be done very quickly. Maybe at the next Steering Committee meeting, if we choose to travel that direction. We could accept names to the Steering Committee for all those. We would have to put out public notice also for any citizen, and the commission would have to accept any application from any citizen that wants to step forward as well. Am I correct, Josh? Any questions concerning that?
They would have to live in his district.
Pardon me? Yeah, it's not like voting. You have to live in that district. That's correct.
They would have to live in that, in his district.
That is correct. That's District 10. I'm not sure how many citizens, but I'm sure maybe we get a public notice in the paper showing the outline of what your district is for citizens. We could probably do that, Madam Clerk, and get that out. Do you have that, Brian? Have a copy of the map, so we can get that out and notify the citizens for your replacement. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Normally, when we have a vacancy, it's announced at the next Steering Committee, announced at the next commission meeting, and then the following month, we'll take the applications and vote on it. That's how we normally do it. That's how we did it the last time there was a vacancy on the commission. So I would recommend that that's the path we go.
Well, got a recommendation. That works. I think the way the coach said, we could do it either way, but it's up to this body, whichever direction you want to go, if you want to give more time to fill the position. So we'll wait till the next Steering Committee, which is a couple of weeks away. Is that correct? Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Rutherford?
Now, Brad, I can't even look at you. So you're talking about filling his role as a Commissioner?
That is correct.
So there's going to be an empty seat in the chairman's position in the Steering Committee? So I guess what I'm asking is a little education here. It seems logical and reasonable that if the chair is not there, that's what the vice chair is for. So when we do have another meeting, would Commissioner Stevens, as the vice chairman, go into that chairman's role?
I believe only on an interim basis, and then once... Am I correct?
Yeah, I think he would serve on an interim basis, so the Steering Committee could elect the chair.
Counsel says that he would serve in an interim position until that person's seated, and then the Steering Committee would elect their new chairman.
So he would serve as the chairman?
That's correct, on an interim basis.
Until Mr. Turner's commission seat is approved or appointed?
Built.
Whatever.
That's correct.
Does the Steering Committee have to decide who's the chairman and who's the vice chairman?
That's correct.
So are you saying that the commission replacement, Turner automatically goes on the Steering Committee?
No, sir. Is he automatically replaces?
Yes. Yes, they fill, they fill any committee slot that Turner...
Okay.
The chair now will be...
Yeah. Commissioner Stevens?
It was that and that, you said that when there is a vacancy, you can go over to the chair, for any reason, the vice chair will automatically become chairman. So there's no limit, the vice chair now becomes the chair. I just think you would be... I do think it would be wiser to have an election, and that's what I plan to do at the next meeting. But the rule says that the person becomes the chairman, there's no interim with it. And then also whoever gets appointed to Commissioner Turner's seat becomes a member of all the committees that he's on. There's no reshuffling, reorganizing. They just fill in those spots, and we move forward. If you look in the next rule, which is Rule G, says the commissioner selected to fill said commission vacancy shall also fill the vacancies existing on the committees previously occupied by the vacating commissioner. So that's what our rules say, and that's the way we need to do it.
That's correct. Thank you.
Well, if I understood that correctly...
There is no interim.
There is no interim. The vice chair fills that chair position, period. Did I understand that correctly? But you were suggesting or offering, although that's the rule, you would like the Steering Committee to have that vote, and/or whoever else, that the Steering Committee decides who's in that chairman and vice chair position. Is that correct? Okay. Consider me educated just a little more.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens, for having that information available. Any other questions tonight? Commissioner P.
Not a question, but an announcement, if that would be...
Yes, sir. Biscuits or something?
That's right. The Ketchel Fire Department is having a country ham and pancake breakfast this Saturday, the 19th, from 6:00 to 10:00. Would like to invite all of you.
Well, I thank everybody, but maybe Commissioner Turner might be there, but I think you've got someplace special to be. Take your raincoat, though, and poncho.
Just move inside.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else to come? Commissioner Cook?
I want to thank everyone in this, in the commission that come to the tour of Laverne the other day. You're going to get some more feedback on that, because we got students being bused from Laverne to Stewart's Creek, and they don't like it. So this is part of the learning of the, of the tour. This is my last tour. I think I've given seven or eight. So, and I appreciate those that come, and those that didn't come, you missed a good party.
Let me, since you bring that up, Commissioner Cook, it was a thank you for the trip. It was very enlightening, and enjoyed driving around Laverne and seeing everything that's happening in that community, and I think third-largest subdivision in the state, and also the amount of manufacturing plants. I was overwhelmed, didn't know many of those were back in there. Was approached by Vice Mayor and the new fire chief since the public safety meeting. They came and requested, after their commission meeting, or town hall meeting in Laverne, they had requested another ambulance. I met with Director Mike Nunley, and, you know, they said they pay taxes like everyone else. Smyrna had three, and they only had one. So we talked to Director Nunley, and he said, "We can give you a 12-hour," which we, I said, "When can you do that?" And he said, "By in the morning," which he placed a 12-hour ambulance that was in idle position. We don't have the money to build a brick-and-mortar building to put a second ambulance down there at this point, nor a dedicated ambulance, but there is a 12-hour. And the next morning, I think your vice mayor called and said that they had already made two calls before 10 o'clock that morning. So thank you, Mr. Nunley, Ham and the Service, for the quick response and taking care of the needs in north end of the county. I'm sorry?
The tour was a high...
Yes, it was. It's growing a lot down there, so we need to be aware of our citizens and that end of the county, Commissioner. Both Commissioners. Anything else to come for us tonight? Commissioner Phillips?
Just getting back to the appointment of the new Commissioner to fill Commissioner Turner's position. The next county commission election isn't till 2022, but there's a general election, I think, scheduled for 2020. Will that position be on the ballot in 2020 or 2022?
I'm thinking the general election in 2020.
That's right, but I, we probably ought to look at the term. So I think that's correct, that it's to the next general election, but...
Yeah.
Commissioner Phillips, that was one item I didn't look at in thinking through the appointment process, was whether or not the general election would come up before the next, as the next opportunity. So I think that's right, that it would be to the next general election, but I don't want to go on the record with that opinion at this moment.
2020.
Okay. Other questions? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn on favor, seeing five, but seeing aye. Stand adjourned.